Welcome, everybody, to a jointly school committee and the select board meeting. It is Tuesday, June thirteenth at five thirty P. M. We are in a hybrid meeting at the Lee Middle and High School, and some of us are coming via Zoom. We are continuing to be in a virtual meeting room per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General law C thirty A section twenty. This meeting will take place in a hybrid fashion, both virtually via Zoom or in person for those committee members and attendees choosing to access in either manner. I'm going to call this meeting to order pursuant to Mass General Law C thirty A section twenty. I'm hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of the meeting. And I'm going to ask everybody to join us in the pledge of allegiance led by Lee Elementary School students Eva Lovett and Lauren Scherer.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was an audio experiment.
Thanks so much, guys. I really appreciate you guys coming. That's our favorite part of every meeting. All right, next up.
I don't mean to interrupt you. I'm sorry, but I think that the select board needs to also call their.
That's what I was just gonna say.
Now we're ready for the candidate.
We need to have a roll call for our.
I'll do it in Brenda's absence. Mr. Aubin. Ms. Cooper. Ms. Kuscharik. Dr. Larmen. Mr. Nichols. Ms. Strickler.
Okay, now we're ready for our first candidate. Is that where Brenda just went?
Yes. Your back is to two school committee members, but it's kind of unfortunately. Dr. Larmen and Ms. Kuscharik are meeting virtually with us.
Welcome. Daniel, we're gonna let the people that are actually there in person do the question answering since we're sitting up here on the screen behind you, so I'm gonna let them take over.
So I got to kick us off, I think. So I'm Betsy Strickler, and I have been on the school committee for, I don't know, two and a half years-ish. And I too joined the school committee through this process of question and answer. So I thought I would kind of get us started and just ask you to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're considering joining the school committee.
Okay, so Dan Boisdell, I know you may say Dan, I prefer Dan. I am a longtime native. I have been born and raised here. I went to St. Mary's School. I graduated high school in nineteen ninety-seven. Recently, you know, COVID hit and, you know, the spectacular job that the school did keeping my son basically in the school during that time was a huge help. And I recently joined an organization and they encouraged me to join the structure leadership program. And, you know, we talked about some of the things that are happening around the county. We had a, we were sitting in a Thursday night class in five thirty, nine thirty, and up at Hillcrest Educational, and they said, you know, we really need some help, and their school is always doing that. So I've been a bit selfish. My son's now eight, and I feel like I have the time now to give something back.
All right, so Dan, I'm Kirk Nichols on the vice chair of the school committee, and also down the committee in similar fashion, but if they can see. I've been here for just two and a half years as well, so Betsy. And so my question for you is, is there a particular issue that motivates you to serve on the school committee?
Particular issue? Well, um, you know, I would say that being open-minded and offering a fresh opinion, I can tell you that you're not gonna find me on Facebook. I don't follow the school on Facebook. I'm kind of a little bit old school. You may look at me like I'm a young guy, but, you know, I'd rather hear from the folks in this room and things that are going on than reading a Facebook post or seeing something in the paper. So being open-minded, I think, will maybe help organs of the committee. And, you know, I'm not sure, you know, my background is in insurance, so I don't know how many people that have had background on it. As far as insurance for other ones comes to setting up a school or a board.
Dan, my name is Bob Kim, and the chair of the select board, Sean Gordon, chairs before. What strength or strengths do you think you can play into this committee?
Well, uh, I don't want to say that I'm highly intelligent, but now when a problem presents itself, I'm certainly going to try to find the answer or the best answer. If I can't find it, I'm sure the resources will go in front of me after. Am I gonna agree on every issue or problem that's facing you now, but sometimes you have to learn to agree to disagree. So as far as if you're looking for a straight, you know, I like to work with people and not against.
Is it possible to ask a follow-up to that question? I don't know how you're doing on this. I don't wanna put everybody out. Say your problem solver. Can you give us one example of the problem solver issue that you're talking about?
Problem solver?
Yeah, just give us an example in your.
That's kind of on a daily basis.
There's no specific.
Specific thing? I could go through my day and tell you. For instance, you know, here we are in front of a school committee. The town of Lee, I bet you their insurance renewal is coming up seven one. You know, I bet you you're looking at health insurance, and there's always a property and casualty bucket. But, you know, that health insurance is really what's gonna drive the insurance renewal rate, and you're probably looking at a twenty percent increase. And, you know, how do you solve that increase? Well, you know, for instance, I had a, I brought some of our team and introduced them to a local organization here in Lee that I won't mention due to HIPAA. But we were able to come up with a solution, and that twenty percent looked a lot less impactful and better for the group renewal.
What you see as the school committee's roles in this?
Well, I went online and I read a little bit of the manual. You know, I tried to look up each committee member, each board member to see a little bit about you. However, it was Latin information. You know, it wasn't real bios of anyone, so I did start with LinkedIn and follow a little bit about everyone that sits here. But it's a tough job, and you have to take into consideration that there's a lot of folks that could be impacted. So you have to be less political, and I hate to use the word political, but, you know, when I look at my son, you know, I want the best for him. And hopefully, the school committee, the school board is doing what's best for my child.
I think you raise a good point, because I know in this past year especially, we had some, some issues that we really had to work through. I think all of us, I mean, I can't speak for everybody, but I think we did try to step back and think about, you know, what is our role in this and taking politics out of this. So I appreciate that you have that thought process.
Was there an example of something that?
So I think, like, we had a dress code issue earlier that I think we all stepped back from and said, what is best for the policies and procedures? Because that's what our role is. You know, we don't work, we work with the administration, but we're specifically with teaching or interacting with students and things. Andrea Nicole, did you have any other thoughts or things you wanted to share?
I'm good. Do you have any last questions for us before we shift you on your way, Dan?
Do I have any left?
Bearing in mind, we're on a time constraint, Dan.
You know, I thank you for calling me in for that. You know, I do really appreciate your time. There's probably a thousand questions that I would like to ask, but you get time for insurance. I know you're all busy and you all have other lives that you'd like to go back to. So, so thank you for that. But if there's one thing that you folks here would like to see happen in the twenty-three to twenty-four school year, what would that be?
I personally would like to see more kids come into the Lee Public School District.
I would agree with you, despite how much I've made the pass.
Yeah, I would like to see our enrollment increase because I think we have an amazing school, and I would like to see more kids benefit from it.
I'd like to see more in regards to curriculum and programs, instruction, teaching and learning PD that goes with that for the teachers.
Once the time gives a whole bucket of money, too. It'd be great.
So Chris, could you get on that? Well, Dan, I would like to thank you on behalf of the school committee for taking the time to come in and interview with us, but more importantly, for, for taking the steps to, to put your application in, because you hit the nail on the head when you said, this is a tough job. And it's, it's not a paying job, and it is a commitment to the staff and students of the town of Lee, and it's a commitment to the future of the town of Lee, because our students are our future. And we always hope that they'll stay within the town, and if they stay within the town, then they are our future business entrepreneurs. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
This is probably good to share with candidates that it's really about a fifteen minute, you know, brief conversation.
This is way different than our search committee.
Well, I think we have to bear in mind, when we originally created these questions, we thought we were gonna have a lot more candidates to interview, so we made them short and sweet.
It was tied at the beginning, so.
Yeah.
Well, I was gonna say, this is, I think, the first time we've had a decision in a while.
When it was Nicole, there was two open seats and two of us.
Right, right.
The last time we had this many applicants and only one seat was when I came on.
And then look what happened. The one time is the next six apart.
We have, we do have a void because one candidate was scheduled for this time slot, wasn't able to join us. Do you want me to just pause the recording?
Yes.
Move for recess.
We've got a couple people remotely. Sorry, go ahead. Andrea, Dr. Larmen, the chair of the school committee is remote, as is Ms. Kuscharik. You will, you won't need to keep turning back to them because they won't be asking questions, but I'll turn it over to Mr. Nichols, who's the vice chair.
How are you? Good, how are you? Welcome. We've got four questions, about fifteen minutes total planned out. Committee will ask two questions, select the last two questions.
Hi, I'm Darren. Hi, you and Greg. My name is Darren Aubin. I'm on my second term. I'm still working for part of what we need to talk for three years. So I'm answering the question here. First, how are you doing so far?
Hey, here it is. Tell us about yourself and why you are impacted in this open.
Sure, so I'm twenty-year nonprofit and educational professional. I always seek out opportunities where I think I can make a difference, professionally and from community service standpoint. I believe strongly in community service. I think smaller towns need more of it. We don't have the bigger resources that we can call upon. I believe that schools are sort of the heartbeat of communities as well. I think education is extremely important. I believe that all students deserve the right to high-quality education. So I'm always looking for opportunities to be engaged and, and sort of forward that thinking to the best of my ability. And I've been involved in a lot of national projects recently. Those are kind of winding down, and I'm kind of looking to get back down to the community level and sort of really sort of focus back in on the virtues. So I spent the last couple of years kind of bringing some of the work that I was doing in the community out of other states. I want to kind of get back down and make sure that the students here are having the same experience as that I'll see elsewhere.
Hi, I'm Heidi Cooper. This is actually my first. So this question is, is there a particular issue that motivates you to serve on the school?
It's a great question. I think it's a continuation of making sure that all students are getting a high-quality education. I don't know if it's an issue or if it's something that I'm just passionate about. I also think that from like a governance perspective, I think one of the roles of school committee is definitely kind of to make sure that we're supporting our teachers and that they're getting the support they need in the classroom. That's when I think about it, that's where.
Craig, thanks for coming in. My name is Sean Renier on the select board, and we all are wondering what strengths you would bring to the committee.
So beyond, you know, my experience in education, I love a good budget. I know that sounds really funny, and a lot of people don't enjoy the spreadsheet, but that is, that is something I actually really look forward to. It's one of those moments where from sort of the corporate side or the educational side, where the rubber meets the road, and that strategically making sure that funds are being allocated in a way that having the biggest impact on students is a skill that I've sort of really sort of focused in on and worked on over the last few years. I, I like numbers, right? My current role right now, I also do a lot of data analytics in terms of like student performance. You know, I can see a pathway where that can also sort of support when you're thinking about financial allocations. And I like to think of myself as a strategic thinker and aware of limitations that public education and the systems that are in place change takes time, right? So kind of understanding the steps that we need to make to make strategic moves. Nothing kind of moves really fast. It's a barge, right? Like, we're kind of steering a barge. It's not a speedboat. So how can we apply that thinking to make sure that we're thinking long-term and not just in the moment?
What do you see as the school committee's roles and responsibility?
In my opinion, school committee is a governance committee. We shouldn't have an agenda. We should be, and take that back. We need an agenda, right? Like, the piece of paper in front of you telling you what the meeting is about, but that, that agenda needs to be coming from management. So principals from superintendent, I think it's their role to present their ideas to us, and then our role is to look at mission of the school system, and then is the agenda supporting that mission, and is that agenda supporting what is best for the students of the districts?
Follow-up questions? Are there any follow-up questions?
Sorry, I was busy writing. Thank you so much. Do you have any questions for us?
Not at this time. You know, sitting on the other side, the best answers I've always heard is, I don't know what I don't know. So I'll kind of go with that. Like, I don't. You know, board, board service is something I've done quite frequently in the past. You know, each board kind of operates a little differently. You know, school committee has a separate side of sort of governing law. I think that's the biggest area by knowledge limitation in terms of like the subtleties of, say, open moving ball, right? Like, how we have to operate as a group, which I would love to the rest of the group to kind of make sure I don't. So, yeah, what I don't know.
I'm curious, in your position with Pittsfield Schools, do you have any interaction with the board?
Only when asked. So I'm not a regular report, but I do support the curriculum department. So I oversee the open science, well, a lot for the middle school curriculum. Our policy is that we have a subcommittee that it, I'll leave with a subcommittee, the curriculum subcommittee, to present that curriculum, why we think it's a good thing, how the pilot's gonna go, and then present that to the full school committee. But I have limited interaction with them from.
Yeah, I just always like the perspective of different groups and committees and what we've all learned.
I have a question. If you don't mind, I have a question. Since I am not, you know, the school.
No, no, no.
On your resume, I noticed there's a line here, redesign district benchmark visualizations and review protocols align tier one structural goals and improve accessibility. What does that mean in English for those of us who are not in the education?
So one of the big things I focused on this year in my sort of move was, how do we communicate effectively to teach us quickly how their students are performing, right? Nate Levinson, I don't know if anybody knows that name, has a great saying, you can't intervene your way to proficiency. Like, we can't continually pull students out for specialized support. We have to really sort of focus in on what's happening in the classroom to make sure that we're providing them a high-quality education. So I make it called the TOA, which is Triangle of Awesomeus, which basically aligns her benchmark scores and sort of our other state metrics and any other information we want to bring in into a simple visualization that a teacher can look at within five minutes and understand how their class is doing as a whole. So basically breaks them down into three tiers, tier one being those students who are functioning well in that environment. Tier two, the students that will need to have a little bit more intention. And then tier three is those students who are really sort of struggling. In an ideal world, you want that to look like a perfect triangle, and what the visualization does is it weights each one of those independently, so that a teacher can see that my tier-one students, like, it's too small, like, something's going wrong here, or I have a big, high-tier-three capacity or need. How do I adapt my teaching policies and my practices in the classroom to kind of shrink that top one and make the bottom one bigger? So then my role becomes beyond visualization, is how do I help them get there? Like, what can I do in support, whether that's looking for curriculum resources or just being a validation sounding board, which is a big part of my job. Like, you're doing a good job as a teacher. Like, what's we can do?
Anything else we should know? Danny didn't ask you, we should.
No, I usually say like I'm a secret superhero, but.
Have you lived in town for long?
So we've lived in the virtues for sixteen years, fifteen in Lee. So same, same location. It's a great little house.
Well, thank you, Craig, for taking the time to come in and for taking the time to put your name in the hat for this position. It's, it's, it's a tough job, and it's an unpaid job, as you know. And so we appreciate you taking the time to come in and interview with us.
Please, thank you. I'm always here, so thank, thank you for your time, sir.
Hi, how you doing? Good, everybody? Good.
You're gonna, Andrea, Dr. Larmen is behind you.
Hi, Patrick.
I'm good. Patrick, I'm gonna let the people that are sitting around the table take over, so you don't have to keep turning around to look at Nicole and I. Nicole and I are gonna listen.
Okay, I'll know you're there.
Hi, Patrick. I'm Kirk Nichols. I'm the vice chair of the school committee. Hi, Kirk. There's four questions for you, about fifteen minutes allocated. School committee is gonna ask you questions. The board is something else.
Yes.
You can start with me. I am Betsy Strickler. I have been on the school committee for about two and a half years. So similar timing, some of us have been here a little longer, others have been shorter. This is her first day. And as her. So we just have a couple of questions to tell you and give you a chance to ask some questions. So I'm just gonna start off with that big icebreaker of thoughts about yourself and why you're interested in this position.
Okay, my name is Patrick. Well, Lee Patrick Rooney. Don't use the Lee part. My son goes here. He's Liam Rooney. We acquired him from another family. So he's new to us, new to you, but we're really happy that he's here. He's been doing very well, and we appreciate the effort. My backstory is I'm retired. I worked for many years in the amusement industry, building and designing entertainment centers. I use Chuck E. Cheese as a reference to folks, but it's that kind of program. A lot of management of people, I had crews that I operated that built with me for a lot of years. So I've been, had people under me in that creative. I have a little shop that I operate now over at the house, mechanics. So I understand a lot of that stuff. I'm familiar with systems. I had sent the note, didn't have a particular resume that I found on a list of stuff I do. Why? I'd like to be interested, I like to be involved in what my son is doing. I'd like to know what he's about, and have a play a part in it, basically, if that's positive. I don't know what you guys do or what's expected. I'll learn that as I go, and that won't take long. I'm pretty good at what I do and would like to be able to offer some of that experience to the board. Sixty-eight? That's why sixty-four? Yeah, yeah, sixty-eight. There's sixty-nine this year. Oh, sixty-nine this year. Most was born and raised in Philadelphia. Spent a lot of time around the country. I built several things overseas for the Chuck E. Cheese facility in Dubai and. For the Chucky Cheese facility in Dubai and some private facilities in Paraca. So, yeah.
As a fellow in Tulareum.
Yay. Reading. Most of them.
Pass your
I'm not but yeah, I heard that one.
Yeah.
So again, I've been with about two and a half years, same time. I also interviewed from my seat and so welcome here. Is there a particular issue that motivates you to serve on the school?
Issue? I think I'm too green to actually have exceptions to what's going on here. I actually I'm very pleased with what we've experienced in the school system. The support from the from Patty on up to the principal for my son has been incredible. We didn't know what we'd be running into because he's special needs. And to understand that you live in a program, a third of them, it feels like almost is devoted to special needs kids. And when we went for our tour, it was very, very, very refreshing to see that and to know that he would at least have that opportunity. And since he's been here, it's just been great. So I don't really, I don't have anything to be concerned about yet. I don't think I will.
Thank you.
Ooh, I guess it goes
Hi.
Member of this, the select board. Okay, not a member of the school. Yes, my name is Gordon Vaydey. And my question is, what strengths would you bring to the committee? Fast learning, an ability to shift gears really well. I race cars, still out of you, so I use that as a reference. You can't be stuck in a path and expect to get where you're going. So I I know I have a T-shirt. I know things. I know things and I fix stuff. I'm good at them. Hopefully, if we have, once I see what's going on. I worked with the Wilson School District in Reading where my my three kids grew up and contributed a great deal to them. We ran new programs, car shows, kids activities, festivals, and I I developed several of those projects. Just a willing soul to do what we need to do. Sure, thank you.
My name is Sean.
Hi, Sean. That's my, how do you spell it?
S D A.
That's my son spelling it. Yeah.
I'm also on the select board. I'll ask you the final question. We might have some follow ups, but
Sure.
What do you see as the committee's roles and responsibilities? Maybe being a little green, as you admitted before, give students just some thoughts about that.
To really look at what's going on with the student body and to see where things need to be added to or taken from, see how the kids' feelings are, see what the programs are going, be involved, I think in generating or creating budgets, managing how those budgets are spent. Yeah, loosely.
Thank you.
True.
I'm turning it over to anybody else.
Any follow up question?
No.
I'm not, I'm not allowed to ask.
And that's all right.
We're not on either board here.
They just have to show up as participants. It gets to come back to me, Patrick. So now you get to turn back around to me again. Do you have any questions for us?
I just to understand that I'm accepted, what I need to do. Once I know what I need to do, I can hit the ground running very easily with that. I, again, I'm retired. I work like one or two days a week at Canyon Ranch, but that shouldn't affect how I perform here. I'm happy to be a part of it if I can. So don't know exactly what what's expected. I'm sure if I'm selected, I'll get a
You'll get a crash course. Don't you worry. I tell y'all about it. It's her first meeting tonight.
sections, groups or departments within the committee that everybody has a piece of something to do?
Yeah, we have lots of different subcommittees that people can choose to be a part of. So there's the whole committee. And then there's lots of different subcommittees that people get to choose to be a part of. And we ask, we ask people to be a part of. People need to be a part of some of them, but they can be a part of as many of them as they want to be. But people need to be a part of at least some of them. So, yeah.
And and what would my position be? Would it be on the main body or?
Yes, so this this interview is to be a part of the main body. And then of the seven committee members that are part of the main body, then those seven committee members are also part of subcommittees as well.
Understood.
I'm not really sure what my question is, but I was just thinking a lot about the fact that you have traveled and done work internationally.
Definitely.
You have a son who chose, I think that was the word, he came to you later. Who has, you know, various learning differences and and things like that. And I'm just thinking about all of the unique and diverse things that you potentially would bring. So I'm not really sure what the question is, but it just
But you're right.
Right? It just feels like you've got a sort of a unique background and also on the technology side and perhaps on, you know, like a facilities perspective from the mechanic.
I am computer literate.
Yeah, so I'm just thinking about, is there anything more you could share with us around that that unique perspective?
I have a, I have a fairly large stack of packs that I'm comfortable wearing. I don't go too far into things that I'm not familiar with, but I'll jump right into most everything because I think I have a pretty good understanding of facility issues, government issues, because as I've built places, I'll go into an area and they're not familiar with what, and this is years ago, mind you, but they're not familiar with what we did as as builders or of entertainment centers. There was a bad stigma around game rooms, dark dismal places where kids did that thing. And I helped to move the majority of the communities that we went into away from that into what we built, which was family entertainment centers, bright light, rides. And with that experience, I had to deal with a lot of government issues, a lot of government boards where they were. They didn't want what we were doing because they didn't understand it. And I feel that as the point for the company in that respect, in that building thing, I was a reasonable first impression for folks. And more often than not, we got into where we needed to be and then who them who their concerns to be on value.
And they think through like the language and cultural barriers.
That's
Especially places like Dubai and Paracas.
Yeah, yeah. Well, even here, I mean, there's sites that I show up to and it's no secret I'm a white guy. So they thought that on the phone and I'd get there and the principals that I dealt with, they knew me, they knew our program. And we always got along. But I'd show up to a job site and some people didn't know why I was there, wanted to know why I was there and who I was and a lot of and when the principal would come out, hey, we'd be whoa, whoa. So as I said before, I think I'm a really good first experience for a lot of people in a lot of ways.
Well, thank you, Patrick. I appreciate you taking the I'm coming from up above.
This is like my son in Alexa. Oh, my God. Anyway, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much for coming in and taking the time for to to put your application in and and to give your time to come in and interview. Because this is a, this is a tough position. It's not a paying position. It's a volunteer position. And we appreciate you, you giving the time to to the Lee Public Schools and coming in and giving an interview.
Very good. Now, are you, are you the cheese or someone here? No, the cheese. Okay, got it. Okay.
Cheese to cheese.
All right.
One more title.
One more title. If anybody brings me cheese, I am not going to be happy.
I didn't say that. So that's what you mean?
That's it.
Okay.
Thanks, Patrick.
Thank you, Margaret. Appreciate your time.
Take care.
Thank you.
So different, right? So do we have any discussion or is it purely the the voting? Numbers, just Andrea. I'm looking at Andrea.
I think you can discuss, but you don't have to.
We can discuss, Andrea.
I mean, they discussed when it was me, so I'm saying you can discuss because when they voted me up, they discussed.
Well, I would like to talk about, you know, my not being on school community. Obviously, it seems like this Craig Langley sort of was, you know, had a lot of experience in school type stuff. He would bring something, I mean, they each will bring something totally different. One, one question I have is, do you think that that particular candidate, because of his background, would be and I don't mean overbearing in a bad way, but do you think he's like too focused on any one issue that the board has to deal with? As opposed to these others need to be a little bit more not focused on that issue.
Budget, yeah.
You know, and and that's great, you know. It, how does the board, your board function and think about each one of those and what they bring to the table? I guess I'd be willing to, I have my thoughts on all of these, but I'd be interested to see how the school committee feels you can interact and work with these three very different positions. So.
So I guess I I think like, you know, I I came to the committee very green and I and I will admit that, you know, my understanding about our responsibilities was not correct at first. And I know through through time of recognizing our job is to support administration, policies and budgets, right? That's what we're here for. So I, when I look at the different candidates, you know, I see different, different levels of understanding about what our rules are. Those can be learned, but I also look back kind of I look back at my, you know, being on this committee and my understanding of those responsibilities as not probably correct at first. I don't think it's a bad thing.
Yeah.
But I think, you know, I don't know.
I think that Gordon's point too is like, maybe a different way to ask that is that, does your committee see a need for a specific set of talents, like whether whether it needs to, you know, somebody who was focused on the budget would be a good foot piece to add to this, or if one of these other guys are, might be a better
You raise a good point because with Andrea Wadsworth having cycled off of the committee, she was really good at sort of budget and finance and numbers and you know, and kind of all of that. So I appreciate having somebody who has a strength in that. I also appreciate somebody, though, that comes up this, you know, kind of the reason I asked our last candidate those questions is I was starting to think about the number of students that come from international backgrounds here, the number of students who come from a learning special needs. And, you know, we don't have a facilities subcommittee, but we always have facilities, things happening and, you know, roofs and fraps and, you know, and so that's where my brain started going that way. It's like, well, we don't currently ask that of our school committee, but would it be helpful? I don't know. You know.
I see that each person brings something.
Yeah.
Bring something to me. Question is, would it fit? What sort of, what are we looking for for that? And my concern is if someone can focus on something, that part of it may be focused down, even though other things are maybe not on. But I also like, I don't have any reason. And I'm someone may have a background in the facilities that can help us too.
So um, I I was just going to say that I I don't see any one of these candidates that is focused on one area, to be honest with you. I found Craig to be overall well rounded in that, yes, he spoke to, he likes budgets and financial aspects, but he also, you know, referred to the schools being the heartbeat and focusing on high quality instruction. And then he also talked about our role and how we we work with management and he spoke to our mission and, you know, the the community working together as well as the teachers. I mean, to me, he hit. If I had a checklist, he hit everything on my checklist. So I didn't, even though, yes, he said he liked data and finances. I also think there was a whole bunch of other things that he touched upon and and to me, just going to be honest, I, on paper, looking at the cover letters on the resumes, it was very, it was clear to me. Seeing that interview was even more clear to me. And I think that if if we go back to what our mission is and what we want for our schools, I think that by far he was the best candidate who showed us that on paper and in person. Just my opinion.
Yeah, when I look at the four questions that we asked, he's the only one that specifically answered all four questions.
That was my next comment is that, you know, our first candidate, you asked a question and they they answered, but it wasn't an answer to the question. It was, it was an answer that sounds good in an interview. But it wasn't, it wasn't actually focusing on the question that was really asked. And I, our last candidate, I think he was a great time. You know, I just, I found our second candidate to be very knowledgeable, which I appreciate on the committee. As a way to support administration and in the mission of the district.
The other thought I had, and I'm gonna throw it out there because this has been a struggle that we've had for the last year and a half, is our finance committee. We are a committee of Kirk and I. And I'm the only person that can vote. Right? And right now, the only person that can vote, so we, in our committee right now, our committee of, current committee of six, the only people that can vote on payroll are me, Aaron, Nicole. Heidi, are you working this summer?
No.
And Heidi. So we've got, those are our people that can vote. So we, we are significantly limited as to who can vote on certain aspects of our of our warrants. And so that's also a concern, as a huge concern of mine, moving forward.
All three of those can, of the candidates, though, could vote.
Could vote, but we also have to have somebody who's willing to come on to our, be part of our finance committee.
Right, right.
But to that point, how about educating the three of us as to what are all your subcommittees? I would be interested to know what that is, so I can feel how would each of these maybe fit into a category?
That's a great question. So our subcommittees are, we have a curriculum committee that I think currently is Nicole, me, is it just the two of us? I feel like it's just the two of us right now.
Right now, it's just that, yeah, it's just the two of us. And just while we're there for a second, just to add on, because I know we just talked about, Andrea talked about the need for, you know, finance and someone there. We also need someone on curriculum and seeing as how, you know, our second candidate works for teaching and learning, as well as, I will just say, we all know that one of my biggest concerns this year was our MCAS data. So we, our second candidate is a data coordinator.
Just, yep. So we've got curriculum and learning. We've got our policy committee. We have negotiations. We have finance. Finance is the one that's the that meets the most frequently because we meet at least monthly. We have strategic planning. We have technology. We have diversity and inclusion. We have help me.
Shared services.
Shared services. And there's one more. What am I missing?
Union twenty nine.
Union twenty nine.
Union twenty nine. And Union twenty nine is me. I have an automatic seat on Union twenty nine. And then we have one other person that gets nominated and voted upon, and then we have an alternate.
Does the school committee, the way it's functions now and the way your, the rules in the town are, do you have alternate? Do you have alternate member capabilities or no? No, can you have X amount of members plus one or two alternates? Because I know a lot of our boards are that way, but I don't know how the school committee board is.
To the school committee?
Yeah.
No.
The subcommittees, I think, is the question.
No, but to the. Like if. I just didn't know if you if where is this in our.
Like Planning Board is an elected.
Right.
But the Select Board can appoint one alternate.
Right.
To that, and they only vote if there's a conflict with one of the other members.
Appeals and a couple others.
And give somebody the opportunity to participate in the meeting, not necessarily vote, learn, exactly.
But I'd like to know.
He doesn't have that.
What a structure, what structure. I'd like to look at that in case we want to reach back to any individual. As an alternate number instead of.
But Andrea's saying that we don't.
Well, well, we got it. Yeah, I just want to look at the law and what we work. Because I don't know what that is.
Is that governed by our policy?
I have to, I can't pull it up because we're on this right now. There is a policy that sets up the structure of the school committee.
Yeah.
They stay run or or voted down by the school?
Locally adopted by the school committee.
Might be something to think about.
For informational purposes, through this. Position, whoever. The boards appoint will be here until the election in May, and then that will go on as a. Trying to remember how many years.
You would have one year left after this, so the person that takes this position would have to go on. The ballot in May and be voted on for to to fill fill the remaining year of Randy's term.
It will be three for three years and one for one year on the ballot. So whoever's appointed tonight. Can run or they may not run, or somebody else could run again.
Somebody else can run at that point. So this position's only for a year.
I do think also it's important to. Look around the school.
Oh, no, I lie. It's good for two years. I think Randy ran last year. He did, yeah.
Yeah, there's two years. Well, there's two years left.
He still has to, he would, this person would still have to run, yeah.
Yeah, it'll be one for one year. Yeah, and then he would run again or achieve whoever.
Yeah, because we only had he's.
Well, no, somebody could run against them, I guess, but.
Right, right, you're right. You're right.
Well, I do think it's also important to look at the diversity of our schools and the diversity of our school board and our elected. Officials. I think that's really important.
I have to say that I, I said it in my first choice. Before listening to what you had to say, and I think the answer is Craig, only because he. He seemed to be the best communicator. He seemed to be, you know, straightforward. Straightforward, you know, straight directed of whatever he was asked. He seemed to have a grasp, a good grasp for all of the components. I would think that like, I'm not an educator, I've seen that request of all the things. Were required. And then I think the only question after that, the new. Is it one of the other two?
From everybody.
What was the last part of that?
The people.
You can't hear. Was there a question at the last part of that? We could not hear.
I'm just, I'm more or less thinking out loud. I mean, that was my impressions. And my only question was, the question is, okay, I thought he was the the best rounded candidate. But is there something that the school committee currently lacks that perhaps one of the other two? Would be better suited?
For me, I I think we are. Needing the finance keys, but as much as Nicole might disagree with this, I feel like we have a lot of strength. In the curriculum side with people on, not necessarily on the committee, but in the sense of we have people who work in schools and understand curriculum. For people in that sense. Right? But for, yeah. Well, because you work in schools.
But I think that's a plus. I don't think that the school should be, school committee should be represented by all the people who work in schools. I think we need to reach out. And that's. Non people, non. Related. Functioning, you know, that kind of thing. I think that's a plus. Have people get on not day to day in the school.
Yeah, and I was very much.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think it's a good balance to not have everybody.
And I also was in the frame of like, oh. This is going to be easy. And then, as you can tell, when when Patrick walked in, I just, as he was talking about just the diversity and. Languages and cultures. And I'm like, oh, this is bringing something totally different to the table, and I did not.
That's why I was asking about watching it members.
Yeah, I'm very.
Mr. Superintendent, do you have any? Comments or concerns or questions?
You put me in a very difficult spot with that. So, yeah, well. So I don't know, no opinion to be shared, respect respective to any of the candidates. I would just say that from my seat. My greatest concern, and this is what I shared with with the Eagle when they asked me about it, is I I just want somebody who's going to be invested. In the community, in the district, and is willing to put the time in. It's a oftentimes a thankless job. Andrea has noted it's that you get no compensation for it, but we ask a lot of you. And and somebody who's willing to put the time in, learn what needs to be learned and advocate for students, for staff. In in our schools generally. So very honestly, I think that all three candidates can do though, can do those things. So. I don't envy the task that's before you, but I think you have three qualified candidates to select from, and I think that's a good spot to be in. For sure, a challenging one, but a good one.
Yeah, so very fortunate to be three. And we haven't spent much time, you know, talking about Dan either, but he does bring something for you as well and has a child in the system and.
Everyone brought something. Around their own thing. They can put something beautiful or bring that skill to the table with making the progress. They all, they all have strengths.
I'm ready to mark up my sheet and hand it over to whoever gets them.
Yeah, and then whoever tallies them up. So we're just.
Right. Dr. Larmen, you were going to say something.
Well, I was just going to say that when when this process was done previously, what we what they did, I can only speak for when I was voted on, and what they did previously is they had each. They went around the table and each person said who their. Person who they picked. And it was by. Majority vote.
Right.
So that's different.
No, what was the plan? What was the plan to do it this time, Chris? Since you ran the show this time?
Me? Yeah.
You ran the show, you you took it over this, Chris, so I'm throwing this time, Chris, so I'm throwing you under the bus.
What we did here was actually similar to how the Select Board has appointed other committee members when we've had multiple candidates. Which was to ask each person to rank one through three. Or or in this case, one through three, because we have three people. And then we tally them up and the lowest score, it would be the person that we get. So you. Somebody could get a two from somebody and a one from somebody else, but it's. The total number, yeah.
I I like that because, I mean, we're not, we're not voting on a policy, we're voting on some to join the committee. It's kind of having maybe more secret vote would be.
Yeah, that's what I.
Would lead to less. Potential issue.
It avoids any herd mentality as well of like, we should just vote it for him, maybe I'll do it too, you know, but I mean. Open to, I mean, it's your committee, so that was.
So so we're putting a score of one to five for the way they answered each question?
No, no, just ranking your order, like if you thought. That. Greg was your first choice, you'd put a one. If you thought that. Patrick was your second choice, you'd put a two. If you thought Dan was your third choice, you'd put a three. And then we'll tally them, lowest number.
Okay.
Get it. Does that make sense?
Does now. Thank you.
So so I would say. If Andrea and Nicole, you can either text those to me or to Brenda, it doesn't matter. We'll and we'll. Convert your tab your answers to the sheet.
We need to turn our.
Well, we didn't.
Anyone other fart is out there? Oh, yeah. I guess you don't, it doesn't.
Doesn't really matter what name, yeah, yeah. Let's do it like this.
Just don't draw them out on the road.
Clean slate.
I believe it, yeah. So one challenge was. And the.
I don't know the order of these, but what I saw looked right.
Yeah, yeah, I put mine there. Yeah, I recognize my rights. Madam Chair, you're. Based on the the votes of the Select Board and school committee members, Craig Langloy is your next school committee member.
I will contact him and let, well, well, actually, Chris, would you like me to contact him and let him know, or would you like to contact him and let him know?
This shouldn't be for, but if he'll need to get sworn in, so.
Yeah, I I can contact him, let him know he's it, and then I'll.
Can send the letter to him if you want, because you'll have to come to town also.
Yeah, I can contact him and let him know he's it, and then I can tell him to come find you to get sworn in.
Got it.
And then who tells the other two?
Who who writes the other letters?
Or a phone call.
Andrea should definitely call the, I'm just kidding.
Chris ran the show, so Chris is taking care of it.
We could take care of it.
Do you, does the school board need a motion to appoint? A member?
I would think that both boards should make a final motion.
Yeah, well, I'll make a motion to appoint Craig, I can't pronounce his last name. I make a motion. Same way as our new school.
Any discussion?
Nicole seconded.
Yep. Then Brenda, can you do a roll call and then while the school Select Board do the same thing?
Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Keshar?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
And Ms. Strickler? And then Mr. Bailey?
I would make a motion to. To appoint. As the next.
Don't run, yeah, yeah.
All right. Next thing on our agenda. Is adjournment. We have a motion to adjourn.
Guys, go ahead, because we're going to do the same thing. A motion to adjourn.
Any discussion? Brenda, roll call us out, please.
Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Mrs. Keshar?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes. We are adjourned at six fifty. Go ahead.
I move that the Select Board adjourns our meeting.
Done.